Okay, it's seven oh one. I like to call this regular meeting in the German Township trustees to order. Could we all raise for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands nomination to God and to the full liberty and justice.
Mr. Easton, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross?
Here.
Mr. Stubbs?
Here.
And Mr. Potter?
Here.
All present.
Okay, we've got a lot of things going on tonight, so I'd like to start off with Chief Birch has a special presentation to Officer Nichols.
As you all may know, we have a mental health crisis in our country that doesn't discriminate, large city, small town. Over the past couple of months, we've had higher than normal. Call for mental health service. So it just so happened that Officer Nichols got to handle every one of those. Doesn't usually happen that way, but it did this time. And I gotta say, he handled them very well. If you know Josh, Officer Nichols, he's got a very good gift of gab. And he talks very well with people. He's very calming, and he did a fantastic job. So I'd like to award him with this certificate of acknowledgement. Says, this certificate proudly presented to Officer Joshua M. Nichols. Forming above and beyond fault duty in multiple crisis and eviction situations involving persons in mental health distress. You did a very good job, Josh, and I appreciate you working here and doing a good job for this department.
Next, we have the swearing in of Sergeant Dillon Jones.
All right, I've got your oath of office. So we'll go through it slowly. So raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Dillon Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
A police sergeant, German Township Montgomery County.
A police sergeant, police, German Township Montgomery County.
State of Ohio during my continuance in office.
State of Ohio during my continuance in office.
By acknowledging my oath of office.
By acknowledging my oath of office.
I am subscribing to the German Township Police Department's mission.
I am subscribing to the German Township Police Department's mission.
To proudly serve the community with integrity, dedication, and honor.
Proudly serve the community with integrity, dedication, and honor.
By continued commitment to excellence.
By continued commitment to excellence.
In all aspects of police service.
All aspects of police service.
Through innovation, community policing.
Innovation, community policing.
Increased training and education.
Increased training and education.
And at all times. I will strive to demonstrate.
At all times, I will strive to demonstrate.
By example, my commitment to honesty.
I.
I'm sorry. I will strive to demonstrate by example, my commitment to honesty, fairness, compassion, morality, and professionalism. So much for reading this.
At all times, I'll strive to demonstrate by example, my commitment to honesty, fairness, compassion, morality, and professionalism.
Awesome. Congratulations.
So we do have some cake, so let's take.
What do you want to do, the penny first? Have this badge been going.
Who?
You haven't.
This is my grandmother. I have to undo this one first. Stab yourself either. Just want to do the top one, that'll work.
Very proud. Many of you don't know, and some of you do, I lost my son in Afghanistan. And this was his military watch. We want Dillon to have it.
Awesome.
If anybody wants any more pictures, now's the time to do it. Again, we do have some cake. Let's take a few minutes if somebody want, if you want to get some for now.
You can probably take the cake over in the red room.
Yeah.
It's for everyone to do over there.
That'd be pretty good. I want to thank you all for coming for Dillon's.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Hey, we're lucky to have, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, it's gonna go in the other room, so if you want to follow that over there, you're certainly more than welcome. We have plenty.
Or I see where we rang. Cake.
The cake trustee. I don't expect you to win enough.
Thanks for coming.
Got some waters.
Okay, next, Susan Crable is here representing the Montgomery County Land Bank, and she'll speak on the opportunities that we could have through the land bank. So Susan, if you want to come on up and go to the podium, once she makes her presentation, if anybody has any questions afterward, we can.
I was so impressed with her attendance to the normal township meeting. I didn't realize who was going to be competing with cake, so. Thank you for your time this evening. This is the first time we've gone out to the townships. Montgomery County Land Bank covers the whole county. But we spend a lot of time in the city of Dayton and trial wood and Harrison Township, and after, I've been here eight and a half years with the land bank. We just have never had the bandwidth to get out to the communities that we don't do a lot of business in. And I wanted to take this opportunity to make you guys aware that we have some programs that you might be able to take advantage of, and you just, we've never communicated to share it with you. Couple of the ones we have right now are a demolition program and a brownfield environmental program. We have other programs. I sent you an email, listed some of them that I'd be glad to talk to you about, but these two are the focus right now. The demolition program that we're actually operating around one of it right now, Dula Harris is here. She's the demo program manager. We were awarded eleven million dollars to take down properties in Montgomery County. And the way this program is set up is state, the Ohio Department of Development pays seventy-five percent of the demo cost. And the community and the land bank splits the other twenty-five percent. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar demolition, you pay twelve and a half percent or twelve five, and we pay twelve five. The first half million dollars that's awarded to the land bank is a no match amount of money. And what we've decided to do, maybe not in your case, but I know a lot of townships, I grew up in a rural township. They don't have twelve thousand five hundred dollars to sit around waiting to tear something down. We're allowed to disperse that money however we want, and we want to focus on the townships and the communities that we've never worked with before. Maybe don't have the resources to chip in that twelve, twelve and a half percent. So if you, if you have a problem property that you've dealt with, I think every community has one or two that's been a nuisance property. Owners may be long gone, no heirs, nobody wants it, and it's swallowed down around the neighbor's house. We could maybe work something out to help you get that property in the program. The criteria to participate, put a property in the program, you don't have to own it, we don't have to own it. If it's a nuisance, the township usually has some nuisance zoning rules that we can declare it a nuisance. It's a whole legal process that you have to go through. It's complicated, and that's why we hand it off to our attorneys. And they work with the township people to make sure your ordinance allows us to do what we need to do to demolish a nuisance property. Takes a while. There's, you know, thirty day waiting periods. There's title work. There's finding all the people involved. Everybody who has any interest in it obviously gets served, and they have a right to come forward and say, I'll fix it up. I didn't realize it was this bad. I live out of state. I want to own it. And they have the right to fix it up. But if no one steps forward, which quite frankly is what normally happens, after the legal process evolves, we can declare it a nuisance and tear the property down. And under the circumstances, we can assign a no match money to German Township, and you guys wouldn't have any expense in it at all. The way it works, like I said, the legal process, it has to be followed. We would help with that. Our attorney, Coolidge Wall in downtown Dayton. We have a real estate attorney who helps us with a lot of the townships who don't have the resources or don't have the personnel to put the placard on the door that says this has been condemned nuisance and all that. All that they help with. Once we declared a nuisance and we put it into the program, we take care of getting the bids for remediation. Anything with asbestos or anything environmentally challenging, we have to tear all that out, dispose of it in an appropriate way, and then we can do the demolition. We hire the demo contractor. We have staff from the city of Dayton. Who, or city of Gatorade, depending on who would be assigned this area, and they oversee the demolition process. They make sure that everything's done appropriately, such as we, we take everything out. We take the basement floor out. We take the walls out, fill the hole in with clean fill. You know, level it off so it drains well, and then seed it, and you're left with just a vacant seeded lot with decent grassland. And if you guys want to assess that cost onto the homeowner's taxes, you certainly have the right to do that. That's your choice. But that's kind of the process for the demolition. I don't know if you have any problem properties that come to mind when I say demolition, and good for you if you don't, because not everybody can say that. But that's the demolition program. The environmental or brownfield program, same thing. A lot of times there's an old gas station or an old plating company or something that property is long sat empty and, you know, glows a little bit at night maybe, and you wonder why that is. You know, we can help with, we have EPA, Ohio EPA money. We manage that with a fiscal theory for that funding. And same thing with remediation. If it requires remediation, we can help you get funds for that too. That's one of the things we do. And like I say, I just wanted to come out, say hi, and make sure you guys know we're here if you need us.
Oh, appreciate it.
So, so does the property have to be condemned by the health department or?
There are different avenues that you can take, and our attorney would look at your zoning ordinances to see what, what your township calls it exactly. A condemnation or nuisance or whatever. But there has to be certain key, what we call buzzwords in the, in the process that the Ohio Department of Development needs to see before we can move forward.
We really don't have a way to condemn properties.
That's something if you want to have that as part of your zoning. Taking in, taking in mind that you've got some properties that might fit that, our attorney can help you write that in the resolution and make that part of your.
So after all this is done and demolition is over and reseeded, who actually owns the property?
Same person they always do.
Same person they always do. So they theoretically, they could go back and pay their back taxes and have a nice lot to build on.
Yeah.
Which would be.
If you recoup the money, that's, that's, that's okay.
Mark, do anything else? I appreciate you coming out. I mean, I don't, certainly as far as something coming to mind right now, it's certainly an avenue that we may.
Then they comes up, you've got my email and so forth, and glad to help you.
Yeah, appreciate you coming out.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome. Have a good evening.
Want to go that way, there's cake.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Do we have any other visitors' comments? Mark, do you think? At this time, for the fiscal officers' report, we'll talk about a request from the German Township Fire EMS. Let me, I had a little statement here, and then we can ask Chief Alter to ask the other questions. Chief Alter will address the board to discuss a request for the township to allocate to the Fire EMS forty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty cents from the Fire EMS holdback fund to cover the cost, forty thousand dollars, three hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety cents to replace four portable and ten mobile radios that will become obsolete. Are they obsolete as of seven one twenty-five? Is that what the?
Right.
Getting ten thousand dollars a grant from Marx, which is a multi-agency radio communication system. And also six thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents to purchase a brute force cutter and spreader, extra batteries and charger. Being, they are getting grant for that from workers comp, twenty thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. We met, Mr. Easton and I met with Chief Alter and in the pen for on one eighteen to discuss the proposal. So that's the proposal, basically. Questions from the trustees. I'm assuming the city didn't have any money to help you out.
Well, this was not in our budget for this year, sir.
How long have you known about this? How long has this been coming on?
Well, in May of twenty-three, the city actually pulled fifty thousand out of the general fund and bought the police department, I should say, police department radios. And they were nice enough to give money for six portables for us. So at that point in time, we still had the ten mobiles and four more portables that we were wanting to buy. So we knew the Marx grant was coming up. We were, we applied for the fifty thousand dollars, the full amount. The share of our, or the total cost for the order we had placed is fifty thousand, three hundred dollars. We were awarded ten thousand dollars, so we're forty thousand and some of them short there. The other amount is for battery, I feel like it should stand, battery operated extrication tools. The fire service is getting away from gasoline powered equipment, hydraulic hoses, all that. So they now make extrication equipment that's battery powered. So we put in a grant for twenty-seven, twenty-seven thousand dollars worth, I believe, of TNT brand through the safety intervention grant of BWC. We were fortunate to award it all, but just shy of seven thousand dollars for that. So we knew the township had the holdback fund, which I think is pushing half a million dollars, so somewhere in that neighborhood. And we were hoping that we could land the forty-seven thousand dollars to be able to facilitate both of these purchases.
So those grants are still in effect? You know, they don't, when do the grants expire? Are we still at the?
Well, yeah, yeah, we need, we need to move quick. We've already ordered both, so we're gonna need the funds to pay off.
We have two funds that we have for Fire EMS. The older one is what we call the Fire Levy Fund. It has a balance of two hundred and forty thousand and change. And then in two thousand and ten, there was the additional Fire EMS levy, and that fund has two hundred and eighty-four thousand and change. So a total of over half million.
So basically, I mean, certainly the township benefits by Fire EMS, and you guys are out here. Or of protecting the property out here. And also, I mean, Chief, you, you do so much for the Fire EMS. I mean, I don't know how many hours you put in per week. So I think those two factors will wish me to approve this.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Yep.
I, I would just say that we have the, the money there, and it's for stuff like this. So the reason we hold it.
The reason we have it, the reason we set it aside, much to the disapproval of some other people down the hill, is so, so purchases like this can be made and not hurt you financially. So, yeah, I, I don't see an issue with, I, I've been here for ten years.
And you've never asked. Yeah, in the fifteen years, I've never asked.
Exactly. So I've never, they've never come to us before, so I have no problem approving this, the funding.
No problem at all.
Anybody from the audience?
I'm all for it. Comes out of the holdback thing.
More better than daily, and they're a fantastic group. They do a great job out here for the township.
And this will positively impact the, the way you guys do your, go out for your day, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of curious, the existing.
Mark, you want to say your name and address? I'm sorry. We didn't have to do it.
The, the existing extrication equipment that you have that's either gasoline or hydraulic powered, is that gonna be sold?
Yeah, we put up for.
I'm gonna do.
So I move kind of slow when we change stuff. So we'll work with the new stuff for six, nine months, and then we'll get rid of the excess.
And, and curious to, comparing on what you're asking for, but the cost on the new battery operated versus the traditional powered?
I do, I'll be honest with you, I don't know. You know what a hydraulic set costs? I do not know. I'm, I'm gonna assume that the hydraulic equipment's probably less, or the battery equipment is probably less because of the fact that when you go to the battery equipment, you no longer need the gasoline driven hydraulic pump. You don't need hoses. I mean, it's just a win-win for the people that are benefiting from the tool plus us on the scene.
And you don't have setup time on the scene.
Exactly. And not, not any hard feelings here, but the younger generation trying to teach them to start a gasoline powered piece of equipment and. It's a choke. So now they just grab the tool. There's no hoses. There's no noise of the generator running. There's no fumes on the scene. And it's basically, you either twist a lever to open or close, or push a button to open or close.
Well, just the no noise, I assume, would make it safer.
Yes.
Because you don't.
Right. And we're slowly transitioning over. We're doing away with a good portion of our batter, or of our gasoline powered equipment into battery powered equipment. We now have battery powered fans to ventilate homes, battery chainsaw. Yeah, K-12 saw is battery powered now, so you're reducing the noise, you're reducing the fumes. There's no gas, no oil.
Much safer, basically.
Yeah.
And it has the same torque, same power?
Pretty much. The battery powered extrication tools are actually stronger than the others, so.
So can I go ahead and introduce that resolution, Mark?
Yes, we'll make that resolution nineteen, but I'd also like the resolution to indicate which fund you would like it to come out of. If we use the older Fire Levy Fund, it's twenty-one ninety-one. And again, that has a balance of two hundred and forty thousand and change. The newer one, the two thousand and ten Fire EMS Levy Fund is number twenty-one ninety-three. That's the one that has two hundred and eighty-four thousand.
The one with more in it? That makes sense.
Yeah, I think it's fine. So that would be fun. Twenty-one ninety-three has more.
The larger the two.
Twenty-one ninety-three, yes.
Okay, let me make, I would like to introduce resolution twenty-two four dash nineteen, a resolution to allocate forty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty cents on the Fire EMS holdback fund, two one nine three, to purchase. Replace four mobile and ten, four mobile and ten mobile radios. That's correct. Four mobile.
Or portable.
Four portable. Okay, I thought that was wrong. Four portable and ten mobile radios, and to purchase an eighteen volt TNT brute force cutter, eighteen volt TNT spreader, and TNT batteries and station chargers for the German Town Fire EMS department. And in the grand documents, we'll include the, we'll include the grand documents and list of equipment in the resolutions, because we got those, those from last time.
Second.
That all in here?
Got all that in your report.
Yeah. Because I didn't write half of it.
You seconded it.
Doesn't matter. We said it at the same time.
You said it louder.
Okay.
Any discussion of resolution twenty-two four nineteen? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one twenty-four dash nineteen is adopted.
Thank you very much.
I'll get that check for you. Correct?
I will send a check or drop it off.
Thank you very much.
Gee, thanks for all you do.
Yeah, I brought Josh with me. Josh has been a huge help. He's been with us for a little over a year, year and a half. Yeah, full time. He's been with us part-time for six or seven years. Josh is also the chief of Cambin Fire Department, so he's well-rounded. Josh is actually very instrumental in landing a lot of these grants. He's been working on grants pretty much non-stop since he was fired full-time, which is great. My thoughts are, anyway, I can stretch the budget without putting the burden on taxpayers. So if there's government money out there or whatever, we can find, unfortunately, sometimes we're aiming high and only get a little bit, and that's what happened to us this time. But still, you know, we're benefiting from thirty thousand dollars worth that we didn't have to put out, so. Good stuff.
All right.
We appreciate your support.
You want cake that way?
And, and I will, I, I'd like to say before, Chief Birch had said a thing about our department, but I wasn't here when he was appointed, so I apologize for that, but I think he picked a great guy there. And Dillon as well, very highly thought of gentleman in our department. So we work with these guys on almost a daily basis, and they're great. You're very blessed with what you have, so.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate that. Yep.
Thank you, Chief.
We appreciate their expertise, so.
Thank you.
You guys don't have to stick around.
And if you really do want cake.
We will, we will go high in there, though. Thank you very much. We love you.
All right, we will get back to our regular schedule. The diehards are left. David, Mark, Abigail. The diehards are left. David, Mark, Abigail. Okay, we'll move on to the fiscal officer's report.
Good evening again, everyone. I want to start out by congratulating Ms. Close. I received today in the mail several copies of the O-TARMA 2024 calendar. And as they do every year, they put in pictures that are submitted by the various townships in the state. And Ms. Close put in a picture of our canine, and I will pass this around. It's right there on the bottom of that page, so. Great job. It's nice to see our township in the calendar. And if anyone wants to submit photos for the 2025 calendar, that O-TARMA is already collecting those. So maybe we should put a photo of the swearing in of one of these.
You might see that.
You guys want? She took it. That's a good picture, but his head's sticking out.
Who did take the picture? Did you? Okay, good job. We have a new skill, photographer student there.
She has it all.
Well-rounded.
Yes, in my four years in this job, and perhaps in Mr. Keener's four years, I know we've not had a picture from the township in my years. So, out of a thousand townships, we got a picture.
Thank you.
Okay.
I got my photography game.
Hey, I'm just saying, I brought up a calendar idea multiple times.
Let's start out. First of all, we have two sets of minutes. You have the regular meeting from January 8th and the special meeting from January 15th. Are there any corrections?
I didn't see any.
And I have a motion to accept the minutes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the 1-824 regular meeting minutes and the 1-1524 special reading, special meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I've also given you the January financial reports, and as always, you have, well, in January, you get five reports. Uh, you get the fund status at the end of the month. You have the year-to-date cash summary by fund, which actually is the same as the month of January. You have the January receipts and the January payments. And I did want to point out several items. First of all, receipt number one, $3,469.74 from First National Bank, is the redeposit of that December 27th automatic charge that was made in error by the bank to our account. And you will recall from last month's meeting that this was a charge for a credit card account that was not connected to the township. Receipt number five, for $5,024.45 from the Valley View Joint Economic Development District, is the township's portion of the most recent portion of the income taxes collected by the JED. I know you gave it to us in December. We didn't get it until January, so.
Okay, just messed up my bank record for 12.31%.
It's a tough life out there, Mr. Keener.
It is.
Thank you very much, sir. And finally, during January, I did transfer all the amounts from the general fund that you approved at last month's meeting. $8,000 went to the Road and Bridge Fund for the 2024 maintenance of the Township Hall and the Rural Cemeteries. $36,000 was split between the Police Fund with $16,000, the Gasoline Tax Fund with $15,500, and the Trash Fund for $4,600, a total of $36,100. And it helps offset the allocation of the trustee and fiscal officer salaries to those funds. And then $27,000 was transferred to the Police Fund, $20,000, the Road and Bridge Fund, $4,500, and the Road Levy Fund, $2,500. And that transfer approximated the 2023 Star Ohio interest that would have been earned by those three funds had such earnings been allowed by the state. And so the total transfers from the general fund were $71,100. Are there any questions about the financials?
So Mark, how much money has, has the JED brought in for this township total so far?
Roughly? No, but you know what? I, sometime between now and, well, maybe this week, I'll email Mr. Easton final report from the JED.
Okay, appreciate it.
I'll show that in a sense. I do know, uh, I basically budgeted for $100,000 in revenue for 20,000, 2024. Um, I heard that there are now, I think, 121 construction workers out there, so hopefully that will increase the amounts that they've been collecting. Nowhere near the uh.
All right.
The projections provided.
Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Keener, I received a call today from Valley View Treasurer Valerie Hill asking about exactly what Dr. Cross asked. And I sent her to talk to Farmersville. She was concerned about collections from the contractors. Uh, but she may want to touch base with, with Mrs. Hill. I didn't have any information to tell her other than you give us a check periodically.
Yeah.
So, okay, any other questions or comments on the financials? If not, could I have a motion to approve the financial reports and authorize the payment of bills?
Yeah, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve the January financial reports and authorize the payment of January bills, warrants 50726 through 50749, and vouchers 1 through 94 for payroll, direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Also, going back to last month's meeting, uh, you passed Resolution 12, and that was to approve up to $30,000 to pay one half of the Twin Creek Erosion Control Project with channel maintenance systems, the city to pay the other half. And since the project was a non-budgeted item, we determined that night that we could pay for the project using ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act. But I had not prepared the standard ARPA resolution prior to that meeting. So you went ahead and approved the project that night with payment by the general fund in order for the project to move forward quickly. Now, tonight, I recommend that you rescind Resolution 2024-12 with a new resolution, and we'll make that number 2024-20. And then we have you reapprove the, um, the per today expenditure using the ARPA fund rather than the general fund. I've given you language for the, for the resolution to rescind.
Can I ask a question before we do this?
Certainly.
So when I went to the OTA, I talked to Representative Tom Young, and our, our submission was, has made it through step one of two, or step three, I guess. Do, should we wait and find out if, if our funding gets approved for our project before we take it out of the ARPA money?
Well, I had a conversation with the city about that very issue um on Friday because I saw the same information you saw. What I understand from reading the paper is that the state senate is not going to take this up until after the primary, so it'll be in late March. And there was a feeling, both here in the township, I talked to Mr. Holberg about it, I believe, didn't I? And, and also at the city, the channel would not be willing to wait to get paid until then. So what I would say concerning that money, if it goes all the way to the end, and the senate puts it into their version, and then it goes to conference committee and gets approved ultimately and signed by the governor, and we get that money, one. Will we still be able to get it since the project is finished and paid for? It's a question I don't know the answer to, but let's assume it does. If that's the case, I would give the $30,000 back to the city, and I would replenish the ARPA fund for the $30,000.
We can put money back into the ARPA fund.
If we would, I think we would have to.
If we were allowed to, I think, is what he's asking.
Oh, yes, we'd be allowed to.
We're allowed to do, okay, that's what I didn't know, and I didn't know if we wanted to not do this step tonight. Because we've already approved it with, uh, just out of the general fund, right?
We have approved it out of the general fund.
So would it, if he's asked, would it be easier to put, leave it and put it back in the general fund, or to replenish the ARPA fund?
Yeah, I'm saying, do we just wait a month or two and see if it goes through before we take it?
Or are we gonna add extra work down the road if it goes through to put money back in the ARPA fund?
Is it easier just to put it back in the general fund or replenish the ARPA fund? Or don't?
I think the more difficult thing with the state auditor would be if it didn't go through the $60,000, and then I had to take money out of ARPA and put it in the general fund. I think that might raise some questions with the state audit next time. So I think I would rather go ahead and pay for it out of the ARPA. Okay, we get the money, put the money back in ARPA.
Okay, I just didn't want to create extra work, and hoping that it goes through the rest of the way and is actually, is paid for, so.
That would be my recommendation, is we go ahead and do what we have planned to do. We'll pay the bill when it comes in. And then if we get the money, who knows when, we'll put it back in ARPA, and then we'll have to have a project to use it, because we don't want to give it back to the federal government. We have till the end of this year.
Which I have a suggestion, if we have the extra money.
I'll, I'll bring that up later, but.
Very good. So if you're in agreement, I would suggest we start with uh rescinding the resolution from last month using number 20.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Resolution 2024-20. Resolution, rescinding Resolution 2024-12, which previously authorized funding up to $30,000 for one half of the Twin Creek Erosion Control Project, the channel maintenance system per Germantown Resolution 2404 to be paid by the general fund.
Second.
Is there any discussion of the resolution? If not, I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-20 is adopted. And now I have given you the standard resolution for using the ARPA money. Whether you choose to read the whole thing, it's sort of up to you. Uh, but on page three, you'll see the purpose at the top of the page three, and also the amount, $30,000.
You have.
Uh, want to use it, Dr. Cross? You can then hand it back. We'll make that 2024-21.
I'd like to introduce Resolution 2024-21. Uh, hereby resolved by the board, the township elected to use the standard allowance by way of Resolution 2022-116 in this presumption of revenue laws due to the public health emergency to use the amount authorized herein to fund government services. The project is hereby authorized and should be paid from the ARPA funds in the amount not to exceed $30,000. Project described herein serves the objectives of the act by providing services traditionally provided by a government. Accordingly, the project is in the best interest of the township and is deemed, deemed a priority for the community. No obligations paid under the authority of this resolution were incurred prior to March 3rd, 2021.
At the top of page three is actually a description of the project. Did you read that? I didn't hear.
No. The description of the project is to fund one half of the Twin Creek Erosion Control Project with channel maintenance systems for a City of Germantown Resolution 20 dot, 24 dash oh four, the project.
So you need? That's it. I think that's good.
Second.
Do you need a second?
You, if you would like to second it, I'll take your second.
Second.
You've actually read this, Dr. Cross, but I will make note that this resolution does utilize the small purchase federal guideline. And under this category, at least two quotes are required for purchases between $10,000 and $250,000. And the lowest quote must be accepted. And the City of Germantown did obtain quotes from both channel maintenance, which is the $60,000, as well as from the River Rangers International, Inc. for $95,000. And since the lowest quote was accepted, ARPA funds can be used. So we're well within our legal rights to do this. Any, any other discussion?
Just, um, so Tom Young called me on 2-6. He didn't have your phone number.
Yeah.
So basically, he explained that, that the, yeah, the $60,000 was, uh, was approved during that first round. So it's basically a strategic budget, budget from the strategic budget, which is actually excess funds left over supposedly ARPA funds.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure billion.
At least so, from the infrastructure.
So, uh, if, if you read the paper, this was, uh, this was passed by the House. There were a lot of members in the House that weren't really thrilled with it because they really got no indication, you know, no forewarning what was going on there. So only certain people got to put in projects. We were one of them. So, so basically, as Mr. Heaton said, said, this still has to be approved by the senate, and that's probably not gonna be until like the first part of March. So we really won't know. There was some controversy as far as some of the projects. Some, some of the members of the House were not given really advance notice to put their project in there. But in the Dayton Daily newspaper today, the article has us in there. So it's on paper now, so we'll see what happens.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Heaton for getting that submitted as well.
Yes, thank you, Jake.
It was not a very detailed grant request, and I was actually a little surprised when I heard some of the ones that they didn't.
Well, unfortunately, the cemeteries.
Unfortunately.
Did not get, and we spent a lot of time, we got bids. We had a well-thought-out plan, and it did not get, it did not make it through. So we were a little disappointed to see that it did not receive a lot of the support, so.
And the effort should sometime end up with the results, and you put a lot more effort into that than you put into this, but.
Well, and the City of Germantown gets $275,000 more for their, their covered bridge out of this, so.
They, they did ask for a half a million, so I, I didn't realize they would give partials.
Apparently so.
I did not.
Yeah, I did read a couple others.
Cemetery.
At least partials, yeah.
I didn't realize that.
Because we could have done a certain, we could have done in portions or parts and made it work together, but. I, you don't, you can't, you can't get it if you don't try, I guess, so.
Yes, thank you guys very much for getting on that.
Yeah, we literally did that in a day, day and a half.
We did, between the both of us, because you, you got yours in first.
And then we actually used yours kind of as a template to get ours put together down there, so, yeah.
All right.
Well, appreciate it very much.
You're, you're certainly welcome. Dr. Cross, anything we can do to save the taxpayers' money?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it is still taxpayer money, but it's not.
It's somebody else, some other taxpayer.
Other taxpayers. Any more discussion of the resolution that, to use the ARPA money? Hearing that, I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2024-21 is adopted. And since this is an ARPA project, the federal guidelines require us, as always, to get that contract addendum from the contractor. Is that something that you could work with, uh, Jonathan?
Jonathan.
Chip. Chip?
Yep.
To get.
Assigned.
So if you still need a copy, I can get you one.
Yes.
Just let me know.
Yeah, 100%.
Okay, thank you. Um, I was contacted a few weeks ago, or a couple weeks ago, by the new, this year's Montgomery County Township Association President Chris Snyder. And he stated that a majority of the county township's Board of Trustees must approve the appointment of a trustee to represent the townships on the 9/11 Program Review Committee. Butler Township trustee Bryson Jackson has agreed to serve as the county township's representative. And so I've given you a resolution to appoint Mr. Jackson. It was provided to me by, uh, Chris Snyder. And if someone would like to introduce that, we'll make that number 22.
I'd like to introduce Resolution 2024-22. Resolution to appoint Township Represent, Representative, um, Bryson Jackson to the 9/11 Program Review Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2024-22 is adopted. Also, when we were talking, uh, Chris Snyder and I, uh, he mentioned that one, first of all, the next Montgomery County Township Association meeting will be held on March 28th up at the Montgomery County Business Solutions Center there on, I think it's Cincinnati Street in Dayton. But more to the point, uh, this year's Township Association officers would like to restart a program that they did up through COVID where they would, um, hold their meetings. where they would hold their meetings at various township locations. And Chris Snyder asked if we would like to host a meeting later this year. What's your thoughts?
Yeah, it's much better when somebody hosts it. In the past, when they were doing it, it was, I think. Timing too, they were doing them earlier in the afternoon. It was hard to get to. So I don't know if they're going to push them back towards the evenings again. I hope they do. But I would like, I would think it's prudent to host a meeting here.
You would like to do one? Any, basically all agree?
Yes, I'll say something before that. So the meeting that we had here, I was in Mr. Easton's position. There was dinner involved and all of that, which also meant that this puts some work into the guy that normally gets a lot of work rearranging this room, putting tables in, things like that. So. Over into consideration and making this decision. You just let me know when the meeting is, but I appreciate you looking out for me.
That's what I do, Ben.
I think if we have leftovers for you, right?
That's key.
I don't think we want to provide dinner.
But that's traditionally what they did.
That's what they did. Yeah.
Oh, we'll see what.
Find out if that's what they want to do. But they would, they would give you a set amount too to.
Yeah.
Provide the dinner.
The last time that was here, there's a restaurant called, I think, Farmer in the Deli that provides incredible food.
And there was no cost, there was no cost to the township, by the way.
That's very generous.
That was then.
Well, we'll, we'll say maybe once they find out, you know.
More details.
Okay, I will say maybe. And I will talk to Chris about that.
I believe too, in the past, that townships have gone together to host one. I think, was it Perry? Lay, didn't they do theirs at Rob's? Was, is that right?
I didn't go to that meeting, but yeah.
But I think that, so Jackson wanted to get involved with us to host someplace. I mean, we could split costs and promote our western side of the township to those that don't know we exist.
Okay, very good. I just think it would be more interesting to have the meetings here or anywhere rather than that room. You've been up to them. It's.
No, they were not, when you go to different places and you have different, you get to meet different people and it's just an all around. I thought it was better when they were doing it that way.
Because there's not a lot of interaction.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. I have completed the twenty twenty three annual financial report. I've submitted the financial statements and all the footnotes to the Ohio Auditor of State. I have had published the availability to review the annual report here at the Township Hall. That was published in the Germantown Press back on January twenty fifth. This close has posted the link to the audit report on the homepage of the township's website. There's also a hyperlink on the website homepage to access the township's financial transactions on the Ohio checkbook website. We're as transparent as we can possibly be. So anyone who's interested and look it up and if they have questions about anything they see, please reach out to me. And my last item is I did send to the Montgomery County Auditor the Township's twenty twenty four certificate of the total amount of all sources available. And the auditor uses that report to prepare our twenty twenty four official certificate of estimated resources, which should come sometime early next month, I would think. So with that, I am done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heaton. Police Department report, chief.
For the month of January, our department drove five thousand two hundred and six miles, dispatched ninety one times, and we closed ninety cases at seven case follow-ups, at zero arrests in January. And we had three hundred forty business checks, forty seven vacant house checks, and nine hundred and twenty six occupied house checks. Monthly information on cruisers, this is another big month for cruiser repairs. Cruiser U, which has sixty one thousand miles, had a repair of twenty two hundred dollars. The check engine light was flashing on and off, there was a lag in acceleration. Took it to Middletown for, they found that there was need for new purge valve plugs and coils. And it also needed four new tires as it was at the wear line below some of them. Cruiser T, which is our K nine unit, is still in the shop. It's got ninety five thousand miles on it and there was a nine hundred dollar repair estimated for the timing cover seal leak and a radiator drain valve leak and the right front hub bearing replacement. The timing cover seal leak was covered under warranty because they had to take that off when they replaced the water pump a couple of months ago. So that'll come. Cruiser W is still in the shop. It's got thirty eight thousand miles on it. The right front CV joint boot is torn. So the CV half shaft has to be replaced because it's a sealed unit. Currently, they're saying that that's zero cost, which is good. I believe it's probably covered under a powertrain or a drive train. That's it for cruiser repairs. Monthly information, as you guys saw, I worried Josh tonight with that certificate for his outstanding work with the crisis intervention and helping people in need in a township. And I have to say, our entire police staff, including this close, they're really exceptional. They would excel at any large department in Ohio in the country. I'll give you an example, Officer Wolf, that left here to go to Georgia, be with his family, his mom and dad live in Georgia. He left here, he joined a very large department down there and within three months, he was made a sergeant. So that kind of speaks to the ability of our officers. We're not just a podunk police department. We have a very good group of officers serving our community. So they choose to work here for a reason. They've been offered jobs other places and they choose to work. So I just wanted to put that out there. Kind of say something about the whole department. That's all I.
Hey, Road Department report, Jeremy. Just a couple of things this evening. Just kind of keeping you up to date on this winter that we've been having, which has a direct effect on our budget because we don't have as much salt in brine. But just to keep you up to date, twenty twenty three, twenty four, I budgeted ten thousand dollars to cover salt and brine. And to date, we have spent six thousand seven hundred and sixty three dollars and thirty three cents. And of that, that was sixty eight point seven nine tons of salt that we brought in and the county just brought us a thousand gallons of brine, which will last us well through this season and probably well into next season. So currently, we are all on both brine and salt. So we're a little over halfway through the budgeted line on salt and brine. So hopefully we'll have a little more carryover in there. We didn't spend much last year either, in for a mob winter last year as well. Just want to throw that out there and give you kind of an update on what kind of money we're spending on snow and ice control. A second item is, I know at some of the past meetings, we've talked about replacing one of the dump trucks. As you know, the township road department has two full-size dump trucks that are crucial to the department for snow and ice control and also for services that we provide through the summer. The Road and Service Department was planning on replacing truck one oh eight this year, which is a two thousand six international HT five seventy. We're looking at replacing it with a twenty twenty five international HB six oh seven, which is very similar to the one that was purchased in, I believe it's twenty one. The truck will obviously be purchased under the state ODOT state bid. And I attached a copy of quote that we got from Rush Truck Center, who is our local international dealership for the cabin chassis. The HB's are getting kind of hard to come by. They're not allocating a lot of spots for purchasing these vehicles to local dealerships. But we've been assured that there are some open spots to order one. And even with that, we're probably looking at late August before build date. So if you think about building the truck in late August, hopefully getting it by September and then sending it to another company to have it upfitted, putting the dump body on it, snow and ice control equipment, lights, all that good stuff, electronics, you know, we could be pushing into the snow season unless we act, I think, rather quickly. The quote for the cabin chassis for the twenty twenty five HB was a hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and twenty two dollars and sixty eight cents. I did get a quote from Blood Hill Road Machinery, who would be doing the upfitting. I did not include that number, but the price for the upfitting was approximately just under seventy two thousand. And that was the bed and hydraulics.
Seventy two.
Seventy two thousand. So we are still under the two hundred and we were kind of thinking we were going to be closer to two fifty with some of the people we had been talking to at some of the shows and, and people we had reached out to. So we did, Scott and I did go up and meet with a gentleman up at Montgomery County and talked about some of their trucks that they'd been ordering and he was telling the same thing. If you can get them, probably over two hundred. And so this truck that we specked out is pretty much identical to the twenty twenty one, which is nothing. Nothing fancy that's any different. The one thing that does drive the price up is we're starting to put the brine application equipment on the truck. Instead, right now, we're hanging the tanks on the back of the tailgate. It's a total pain, but it, it works. But now we started using it and found out the benefits. We've integrated that equipment truck, so it's not just an afterthought. So with that, I'll let the board take that over whether they want to act tonight or whether you want to sit on that. But you, I'll leave that up to you.
Well, I noticed they had a pretty long warranty too, eighty four months.
Yeah, we actually buy an extra warranty.
Okay.
They, I actually talked to a gentleman in the state of Ohio and helped me to get the proper spec.
Okay.
And he said, yeah, definitely want to get the warranty because with the, all the EPA def control and all that, the kind of like converters and all that stuff is super, super expensive to work on since you don't want to get stuck working on that if it's out of warranty. So.
And is international, in your opinion, still the way to go on?
We've sat in all the trucks. I know a lot of the, a lot of municipalities have bought those Western Stars. My opinion, you can't see out of them. They're a big beefy truck. There's nothing wrong with Western Star. They're a good product. Same with Freightliner. More money and you can't see. The thing I like about the International is it has a steep slope nose.
Okay.
And you can see right in front of, you can see the snow plow, you can see what, you know, what's in front of you, what you're plowing, no boxes, you know? So in my opinion, we've had, we've had pretty good luck with Rush Truck for repairs. It's local, you know, right at the date. A lot of these other places, you have to go all the way down to the river on Cincinnati. Rush isn't the cheapest to work on your vehicles. But they do seem to give us some sort of precedence when we take so equipment down there. They seem to jump on it pretty quickly because they know that it might be more important than the delivery box truck or something like that. So. And they do run two or three shifts of repairs. So even if you drop it off at three o'clock, it might get fixed through the evening.
Okay.
That's kind of nice. So.
One more question. It looks like they put a Cummins in this. They didn't, that's not what you have in the other one, is it? They switched over to that.
Yeah, the International motor.
Okay.
Once they went with the tier four stuff.
Gotcha. Just wanted to make.
The International motors didn't do so good.
I knew that. So that's what I was, I saw the Cummins and.
Yeah.
That's probably a good thing.
Yeah, the L nine has been a pretty tested engine. So that's what a lot of people are getting now. Max force motor. They had a lot of problems.
Yeah.
Thanks for your expertise, you guys, because I look at that, I have no idea. So is that a budgeted item? How does that work?
The answer is yes, although you don't see necessarily anywhere in the budget that says dump truck. But there is line items and I don't remember exactly the title.
We, we, we sent back money last year for half the cost or what we thought would be half the cost. We ended up taking it out of the budget for certain reasons. And now it is, there is money in the budget in carryover to purchase the pieces of equipment. So I don't think it's in any line items. It's just shown as money that has not been allocated. Would that be a good way of putting it?
Just pulling up your, your budget for this year. So he has budgeted.
It will be the leftover money out of each fund.
That's correct. He has not budgeted this at all. It will be using ending balance money that we did not do any budgeting for. And if we look at his his budget, we're expecting. Here we go. We're expecting the gasoline tax fund to have a hundred and fifty thousand by the end of the year left over. We're expecting the road and bridge fund to have almost eighty thousand left over. So there's two hundred and thirty right away. And then there's another fourteen thousand that we think will be left in the permissive motor vehicle tax fund. So he does have sufficient funds to pay two hundred thousand. I, I would recommend that you approve this purchase, at least this portion of the purchase tonight, so that he can place the order with Rush and get this going. Because every month you delay is a month further into next winter season.
I agree. What I'd just like to add, Jeremy does a great job of keeping his equipment clean. You couldn't even, if you went back there today, you couldn't tell me he has a two thousand six truck. So.
Unless you looked underneath.
That's true. But he does a great job. It's an almost eighteen, nineteen year old truck. It's definitely, any bigger township would have replaced it ten years ago.
The average on ODOT and other counties is usually twelve.
Is it? Okay. So it's beyond its lifespan. It's done a good job. We're going to get some money back for it out of gov deals.
Yeah, that's, that's the other thing I didn't state was, yeah, once, once the same as when we got the other, the other new truck, the twenty twenty one. Obviously, we have to keep that truck up till the day we get possession of the new one.
Yep.
Once we do, immediately it will be declared access, put on gov deals. We expect probably in the vicinity, I'll figure something we can earn profit from the sale of the old one. And that will go straight back into whatever line item we take this money out of. So that will reduce the cost of the new vehicle as well.
Well, it's kind of sticker shock when you realize there are over a hundred thousand just for the truck, a hundred and eleven or whatever. But it's definitely, it's something you guys use every day.
Right.
It's something we have to have and functioning well to do your job.
There's, there's three pieces of equipment that absolutely cannot fail. And that's those two dump trucks and the land. That's it. I mean, pickup truck, we can do without. The mowers, you can get by. But when it's, when it's those, those things have to work.
Yeah. And I think they've, they've racked up some repair costs in the last couple of years on the older one.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, this is a non-budgeted item. This is actually an appropriation that you're going to be approving. The appropriation should be for the hundred and eleven thousand, I think it was. Just make it a hundred and twelve thousand. Just make it a hundred and twelve thousand. Appropriation. And my recommendation would be, let's use the gasoline tax fund because it has the largest expected. Um, balance in the, in the account. So let's call that twenty twenty-three and you're going to use gasoline tax fund number twenty twenty-one. And we'll make that a hundred and twelve thousand appropriation from that fund for the purchase of the. Dump truck.
What was the resolution number?
Twenty-three, number four twenty-three.
Oh, Mark's leave there.
All right. You want, I'll do it if you want, I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, a resolution. To purchase a twenty twenty-five HB six oh seven international.
Cabin chassis.
Cabin chassis. At the cost of a hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents from. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
From the gas. Gasoline tax fund two zero two one.
Two zero two one is the fund number.
Second.
Thank you. I'll play the recording and we'll get the words.
Okay.
Into the minutes. Um, any discussion of the resolution? I will call the role, Dr. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
Mr. Potter.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four twenty-three is adopted.
Um, the only other thing I wanted to report, it's not on my uh written report, was that Scott and I attended the OTA trade show last Thursday. And obviously, we spent quite a. Quite a bit of time talking to Rush Truck. Um, even though we've been talking to him quite a bit before that, and we also spent some time talking to uh the outfitters, um, Blood Hill. Road Machinery. And also, uh, we went up there to look at some lights, uh, possibly replace Mercy lighting on the pickup truck, uh, which we're planning. Using more grant, more grant. Uh, funds to purchase a new light, um, the light on top was just like a sixty dollar Amazon LED and it's. There's a difference between a. Three or four hundred dollar strobe and a sixty dollar strobe, so I'm planning on using some of that grant money to place that here in the future, so. Um, with that, that's all I have.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Mm-hmm.
Zoning department.
Before she starts, I want to make one more comment about. The dump truck. This is a non-budgeted item. So. For this amount, we'll take it out of gasoline tax, when it gets ready to be outfitted. You may decide you want to use some of the ARPA money that we have remaining, and that's a non-budgeted item, that can be done. Um, and since we're using the state contract, we don't need a second quote. You, just as we had with the road. When we did Siegel Road using ARPA money. So it, this project could very well qualify if you wish to use ARPA money down the road for the outfitting.
Yeah, we talked about that in the past.
No, good.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mark.
Uh, zoning department.
Kind of a slow time in the zoning as far as permits, we only have one written in January. That was after the BCA approved the Valley View Local School District sign. Uh, which was larger, significantly larger than what the resolution approved, um. So they are going to get their new sign at the new school building site. And um, March fifth, we have the regular meeting of the German Township Zoning Commission. Going up and March twelfth, the public notices have not gone out yet, they will go out hopefully this week. Uh, there will be a BCA public hearing for the Smyrna Ready Mix uh Materials Expansion across Butter Street. So that one should be super exciting. Um, I just want to give you guys an update, the payments made in our online payment system for I work for trash bills and you take zoning payments in it too. Well, at least seeing more and more people paying as of February sixth, after the first bills of the year went out. There was six hundred dollars in zoning payments made and six thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars seventy-seven cents in trash payments. So we're getting there slowly but surely.
So a hundred people. Six dollars a piece, a hundred people charging.
If that's the math, my math is no good, but we're getting there more and more, I'm seeing more and more each, each time, so we've got all the bugs worked out and it's working very well, so. Um, the only other thing I got is I would like to thank Jeremy and Scott over at department for fixing all of these illuminated signs. And building that nifty little stand for our camera. So we don't have to rest it on the podium and worry every time someone comes to the podium.
Do the credit card payments cause you more work or less than a check?
Oh, much less.
Much less. So we transferred work. From your department to mine.
I apologize for that, but yeah. Don't worry, I still have, you know. I still have about sixty thousand dollars in credit and checks coming in every quarter, so.
Unfortunately, the way it works is the bank or the credit card company. Every day sends a deposit. To the bank with whatever they brought in, sixty-five dollars. Six thousand dollars, it's one transaction. Uh, every day, and then she gets a report of each individual transaction, so I get the pleasure of trying to match them all up. And then do a.
You want me to see if they can send those less frequently to you?
Well, but you still need the detail. Yeah, if they could post a weekly, I would love it, but. I mean, if you looked at my receipt listing for, for January.
Yeah.
The number of receipts all say credit card.
Yeah.
Trash payments. But that's okay, we're, we're, we're giving. A benefit to our residents, which is important, and as I said, I get paid whether I work or not, so.
We had a hundred somewhere when there's a few thousand of those.
Yeah. Well, I don't want to say, but trying to go through a multi-page list of sixty-five dollar payments.
Yeah.
And say which ones match up to where, but anyway.
I will, I will contact them and see if we can't get that change where they're making the deposits less frequently.
That's, I still have to do the matchups, but it'll, it'll make, hopefully help, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Mr. Potter, report.
Yes. All right, we had a, uh, at the park, had a park board meeting, uh, we got a new park board member, Rachel Goforth. She is actually, uh, she lives here in town, but she works for the city of Miami'sburg in their recreation. Park, so maybe she'll be, be helpful here. William Heiston is still getting this stuff together for the, for the new tennis courts. And we're getting a new roof put on the depot through insurance with the cost of just a thousand dollars for the deductible. Um, the Twin Creek Project, the erosion project is finishing up on the park side. Um, I think it's went really well, um, sorry, pushing the creek over, have you guys been down to see it?
You've ever tried a few times.
Go see it, looks pretty good. Uh, they're finished, post-affinished up with the park side today, was the start on the. Uh, roadside, Mudlet Side tomorrow, tomorrow and Wednesday. If their thing works out correctly.
I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
What kind of traffic controller are they gonna?
Just have flaggers for.
They are gonna have flaggers.
They're gonna have flaggers on one lane, is what it was told.
A whole bit hurt then.
Yep, would hurt to go down and check on one.
We definitely will, because that's a dangerous drag right there.
Yeah.
Abigail.
Name and address.
It's Abigail Hale Dennis, one three zero nine one Oxford. What is going to be done about the bike path where they've messed it up with the equipment?
They're just going to have to, if they've messed anything up, they'll have to fix it.
That's budgeted into what they.
That's their budget, that's their problem.
And what about like all the stuff that's already washing down the creek?
All the stuff that's already washing down the creek.
Branches and stuff on the side when I've been driving by, I've been seeing it washing down the creek, some of it.
Just wash on down the creek.
It stops up somewhere down there.
I don't think branches will stop anything up.
Some big branches there.
Um, they'd be cutting, they cut a bunch of stuff up that, that's, they call floaters. They just saw them up from the float down the creek. Um, which is what has been done in the past. Uh, if you've been up there and see how they got it all tied down. So. We missed three good opportunities, we missed three floods, that sure helped us, we would have got this done a month earlier. They all come together. Sorry, yes.
The, uh, Deb Cross, seven four 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 South Steiner Road. The trees that they're taking down within just a few feet of the bike path. Why are they taking those trees versus trees in the forest? It's like watch them, and I mean, it's a lot more labor intensive, it looks like to me.
They have hauled a lot of trees in from outsourced, they have hauled the.
Yeah, but.
I understand it, they're just taking on.
They've not took up, they've not cut one tree down that they wasn't allowed to cut or asked to cut. So they're just, they didn't want to cut everything from, and take away from the disc golf, so they're just taking out there from. From wherever they needed, I, I, it looks to me like they took some from across the road. On the. On the um. Webber side. On that path, there's fresh cut trees there, they just need, what they're looking for is trees with a lot of branches on them, that's what they're looking for.
They're gonna do the ones along the creek first, though, that we're hanging over?
They already did that. Yep. And they're going to be cutting more tomorrow, next couple of days on the park side. Taking them across to the creek, to the roadside.
But the disc golf course, it looks great. Facebook's been raving about that and how the kayaks can go down. Yeah.
Yep. So they, they have a, he told me that they didn't cut, there was all kinds of disc golf guys there. And he said, oh no, don't cut that tree because it's leaning over, they want to be able to part of the. Golf, part of the uh. Grain, they want it. So, absolutely.
I think trees closer to the creek provide stabilization to the.
Yes.
The ground as well, so I would think they try to go further.
Not those sycamores though, that are falling over with.
Yeah, those wouldn't, yeah, absolutely.
That's the ones they want because they don't float. The sycamores.
Interesting.
Yes. It's, 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 so far it's rough really well so far. Just hope it does what it's supposed to do. I think it should be, I wouldn't know why it wouldn't, like I said, they've got everything tied down, they've got, um, how many. Um, concrete anchors they put in there, tying stuff too. Uh, they did dug several head men in that you tied stuff, see? They got this webbing, I would call it, over top of all the limbs, so the limbs can't float away. Um, they've spent a lot of time and. Miles of rope put in there.
Well, we will get the bike path fixed.
Yeah, if the bike path is messed up, it'll be fixed.
We will make sure that's done.
The city.
The city.
Okay, I hope that the money comes through, that would be nice.
Fingers crossed.
Try it.
Will be nice. Good deal.
Anything else, Mr. Potter?
Uh, pool, we had our first meeting, the pool meeting, just mainly discussing the pool prices. And I don't know if you know it or not, but the Miami'sburg pool will be closed for the next two to three years. So they're talking about the impact on what that's going to bring into, to our pool. They're building a new pool.
I think Miami'sburg is, is gonna try to actually reopen.
Oh, then they've changed it.
Yeah, they have changed it, they weren't going to, and they're, I think they're just hiring an engineer for the damage it's going to cost.
Oh.
So it may, may be open.
It may be.
So.
Yep. And just, uh. Met with Jeremy down several times, just got down there at the erosion project. All seem to be going good. You have any opinions on any of that?
You can definitely see the creek starting to work on that. Island.
Ramble Mark.
Yeah, the gravel. Triggers crossed it. Be interesting to see. The effect of, uh, tying some of those limbs in next to. Mudlet Road has, it truly can't hurt anything to help protect the toe of the, the bank.
One question I had about that too, and some of those trees along Mudlet Side. Keeps cars from crashing into the creek. So. It'd be nice if most of those trees were kept there because if they had just natural.
The ones they're planning on taking are the ones where the. That are down close to their toe, that are already losing most of the root bar, root ball, and are ready to fall in. Um, yeah, they.
They're pulling most of them from, from the park side.
They don't have to.
Yeah.
Because that, their root system is what's holding that.
So they're pulling most of them over from the park side, they'll have a skid steer over there with a winch. Blowing them across.
Yeah, we have a lot of crashes on that road.
That's why we put those.
Getting wet.
You know, thanks for coming in.
Always fun. Okay, it's just in your seat.
No, I gotta get it.
That's, that's all for my report.
Mr. Stubbs.
All right, and I've got more than normal tonight, so we'll work our way through this.
Is it on your computer?
Most of it.
You send it to me, sure, if I'm in it's easier.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, first of all, we're gonna start with the cemetery, I've got a levy update, so, uh, within the last month, we were notified, Bob Rorback had done some. We'd gotten the, the language back from the border elections. And, and they had, had put German Township down as the, uh, entity. On the, on the ballot language, so, but going through. Our prosecutor, going through the board of elections, Bob did most of it, uh, and then I contacted Nathaniel as well. Basically, we can't change what they've already done, they've already printed the ballots, our only options were to, uh, remove it from the ballot. In which case it would still be on the ballot, you'd still vote on it, it just wouldn't be counted. Which can't do that. And.
We still pay for it.
And we still pay for it, or.
Okay, get it wrong, because, right, so.
That what it comes down to is it says, in, at some point, either five years ago or ten years ago. They've changed the wording where it used to say. Germantown Union Cemetery, now it says German Township. They've assured us that the money is going to the cemetery, it won't come here. It will not come here, it still, still stays down there, so the only, it says German Township, it doesn't say German Town Union Cemetery, so.
It says German Township Cemetery.
It says German Township, uh.
For the maintenance of cemetery.
For the maintenance of cemeteries.
Which one could interpret meaning are rural cemeteries, which of course it isn't used.
It's not at all, correct. So we went back and forth on that, the only ended. How we ended it is the only thing we could do, leave it on the ballot. Uh, the money's going to go to the cemetery and then we need to explain. To, to the, the residents, the purpose of where this is going to go and the reason for. Which leads me into my next, uh, part, is we've, we're working on forming a committee to, uh, take on. Spreading the information of these. Uh, the information, spreading the information to the community and letting people know the reason we're running a replacement point five mil instead of the, uh, renewing it at point five. Uh, just in the last couple of years, inflation has been out of control, in the last twenty years. We have doubled the size of the cemetery. Uh, and we're maintaining more land, mowing more land, more headstones to, we need to trim around. Um, so those are the reasons where we are seeking, uh, aging equipment as well, and then there's more reasons, and I can get into that later. Um, but we're, the reason we're asking for. The, uh, replacement is to be prepared. Um, and not run ourselves short in the next year or so, so. Um. We've solved the ballot issue. Um. And our committee, I think, is going to move forward and do a great job and get the word out, so. Uh. We submitted, as I mentioned last month, I believe, we submitted a project to the state budget. For the roadways through the cemetery, it did not make it through the original process, so we did not, we will not be receiving any money.
Mr. Stubbs, on that point.
Yeah.
What I understand from reading about this whole process. Is now the Senate's going to put in their three hundred and fifty million dollars worth of projects.
Oh, okay, so can we submit it to the?
I wonder if you could resubmit this through Niraj Antani. He has not come to us, to my knowledge. Nor do I think he's gone to the city of Germantown asking for projects.
So, okay.
Wonder if we could go to him.
Okay, yeah, that'd be a good idea if we could stick it in there. Uh, I think on a scale of importance of the projects that Germantown, German Township submitted, ours was probably the highest and it was definitely not. Uh, not, definitely not approved, so. Um, I will work on. Getting that, your, uh, I'll work on getting our proposal sent in to them that Bob has ready.
You may just want to talk to Niraj and see whether he. I'm not sure what the deadline was, certainly for the house projects, the deadline was early January.
Okay. I think it was later. But I didn't, I, I thought you submitted the same, but that makes sense if they get to put their own projects in now too.
That's how, that's how I understand it's working, the house, did their half of the seven hundred million? That's how, that's how I understand it's working. The house, did their half of the 700 million with their projects, the Senate's doing their half. And that, that won't come out until March.
Okay. Well, we'll definitely, I'll definitely get that submitted or talk to Niraj at least and see what we can do if, if they'll take it up. Hopefully they do because, um, if we could get the roadways taken care of in there, we'll be in good shape for, for 20 years or so on, on that. Just making it safer and, um, nicer for people to come and visit. Um.
Yeah.
Would it be? Be it all beneficial making two smaller projects? So it's not so much money. Maybe you get more, or, or the wall project also. And they're trying to spread the money out over more people.
Right, no.
By getting a smaller amount versus that they cannot.
Our thinking on when we submitted this original project is, is shoot for the moon. And if they gave us half of it, we'd be able to do something, half of it. You know, because we had, we had submitted, when we submitted it.
There was a portion for the paved roadways, but there was also a portion to redo the gravel driveways to make them safer and, and more up to date.
So we had two parts, two different companies in the same project to take care of. So that's what our thinking of was to.
If we only got partial, we'd only do, or we, what we can afford. Um, but I will move on to the wall because that's what I had next. And my feelings are if, if for some reason this money comes through. And we're able to pay for the channel maintenance with that, I would ask that this, the $30,000 that we spent on channel maintenance. Be spent on the offer to the cemetery to repair the wall. And I would ask Germantown in the spirit of community. To, uh, use the 30 we're gonna give back to them.
So we'd have $60,000 to put towards it.
And in the meantime, we can go out and find some bids and quotes on what we need to do. But that's, if only, if we get the money back, I think that that would be a wise, uh, choice to spend the money on it in the spirit of. Uh, working together with the city of Germantown.
Do you have an estimated cost on the?
I do not. No, no, I said, well, we'll work on getting one of those, but. Um. We have, they've pulled the benches in, they've painted some benches, they've re-gravelled around it, look really nice. We're going to have two mowers purchased soon. I've talked about this in the past. They're, they're about ready to come in, which means we're gonna have two mowers to go out. Um, there will be two Ferris mowers placed on gov deals, probably within the next month. We declared them excess tonight. Uh, volunteers recently, uh, from the, from the Veterans Museum came and removed the flags and the wreaths were placed in December. So I'd like to thank the Veterans Museum and the volunteers for doing that. Uh, Narrow Way i- in Carlisle, the machine shop, they fixed the door. So the door on the flagpole, the weight fell and brushed the door. And Narrow Way generously fixed the, uh, fixed the door for us. Uh, so I'd like to thank them for doing that. I had no charge to us. So we appreciate that very much. Um, so after the cemetery, I'm in two places right now.
On that same topic real quick, you might want to think about, uh, talking to Keith about, um, the possibility at some point lighting the flag.
Okay.
Cause I know the flag is unlit.
Okay. And there is electric up near there at least.
Right.
As short as that flag pole is, they have pretty good source.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
It was fired right on up there.
Right on though.
Yeah.
Right on the pole.
Okay.
There's something to go from top and then there's some.
That's a good idea.
That is why the other can.
I, that's why I said that.
Lies at night, it should be good.
Okay. I will, uh, let him know. Uh, that's it for the cemetery. I'll move on. So I, I, I did reach out to the EPA about our erosion. They did get back to me eventually. Um, told me it's not their, not their problem as we expected. However, there are grants available in, in the future if there's a situation. That arises.
I asked who's responsible typically, who's responsible in an erosion situation.
Along a creek bank such as this.
It's the property owner. So in the future, if there is erosion along Twin Creek, Germantownship would only be responsible for it if it was bordering our roadway.
If it's bordering our property, which would be our roadway. So there's not gonna be very many situations in the future where we're gonna be responsible for.
Maintenance of the creek.
So.
That's how you all look at it.
Yeah.
Still need to maintain the creek.
But there, if there's, yeah, we, that's for another day, I guess, but, uh, we're only technically responsible. If it's our property, if it's a homeowner, if there's down the, down the hill here, uh, and someone's upset. It's, it goes to the property owner, not.
Not the township, not the EPA, not the.
Metro Park, whoever actually owns the property, that would be responsible for it. Uh, I covered the holdback, not me. Over that, I said, I'm, had a lot going on today, so I'm moving in multiple spots here. Uh, I was kind of surprised Mr. Gaglin's not here to talk about the park holdback money. I noticed he'd emailed the city and you. Uh, regarding the money we're holding back. I kind of expected him here to talk about that tonight. No. Okay. Um. All right, I'll move on to the OTA. Overall, it was, it was a good conference. So same, basically similar classes. That's kind of getting repetitive, but it's the opportunities you have outside of those where you can make the most of and meeting with people from other townships across the state of Ohio. Um, in the trade show, I spoke with a representative from Waste Management about placing a bid next time our trash billing. Our, our trash, um.
Contract.
Contract comes up. They are interested. They're doing more in Southwest Ohio right now. So they are interested in placing a bid. They would prefer at least six months' notice on a new bid. So when we get closer, we need to notify them. Um, and they, they say they are interested. Um, I think there are problems potentially. I mean, I think they do things a different way from what I've heard. So there could be problems there, but that's, that's a problem also for another day. I also spoke with Trey Bell, the representatives from Trey Bell, who have been to our meetings. Uh, we're looking at a April to May timeframe for our electric aggregation. Um, he seems confident of getting a good rate for us. Um, and they're putting several of us together.
Get the best rate. And the reason there's a slight delay, uh, maybe less a month or so behind.
They anticipated is they're waiting on the paperwork from the township over in Preble County.
That's also passed it, but they need to get, they, they're getting the paperwork through. So we're all going in as one group, trying to get the best rate possible.
And he was pretty confident. Uh, but jurisdictions in total then, do you know?
Uh, I don't know. He said several townships in Preble County, plus us, Jackson, Perry.
Um, yeah.
That could be six, seven.
It could, yeah, yeah.
So that's what they're waiting on to get us all together, one good, one good, um, quote, hopefully. I already talked about, uh, Representative Young. I also got to speak with Representative Rodney Creach, who will be our representative, starting. Uh, I believe next calendar year.
Yeah, January 1st.
Right. He is interested in coming to a meet, he wants to attend one of our meetings. I gave him our schedule. He had tried, he wanted to try and make it tonight. He was unavailable. He will be here at some point this year. So I've, I've sent him our, 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 uh, meeting time and information. So he will be here. Um, a couple of other things of note from the township conference. Uh, Governor Husted is working on a plan to get township license plates for all our vehicles. Where they say county now, he wants them to say township. So that could be coming. Just thought it was interesting information.
Not that it does.
A whole lot, but it just, it will say township instead of county. Uh, there's a proposal in the legislature to end all township zoning, um, and put it in control of the county. Which the OTA has opposed, but they, they're blaming some housing crisis in Ohio. And this is their solution. So whether it goes anywhere or not, they just wanted to make us aware. So that would be horrible for us.
Horrible for us. Well, if Montgomery County's in charge of our zoning, had a cost that would far exceed what we currently.
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah, absolutely. Um, and definitely less quality. So. Um. Another note, Montgomery County will no longer be represented on the OTA Board of Directors. I was shocked when I saw that. So. There's that. And, uh, it was just an overall good reminder of the importance of local government. Because townships specifically, the, our size or around our size are the most efficient. Uh, they're close to the constituents and they have a great impact on our residents' daily lives. The, the closest impact. When we, when you, when we take tax money, it's going right back here. Um, so. Overall, good conference and I, I think it was well worth attending. And that will conclude my report.
Actually, one more thing, sorry. Uh, shred day is coming. Are we still, I just wanted to bring it up because it's gonna be in May.
I don't know, I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking.
Better day.
Thank you.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're on for that. And then Kurt Jacoby, I'll get, I'll talk to you later, but Kurt Jacoby talked to someone up there. He also went, Jeremy, this is for you, Jeremy. Sorry. Kurt Jacoby went and he met with somebody who, uh, a company. It was actually a state agency that does, um, roadway audits for free. So he was interested in getting that for us. He was talking about the crashes on Seagull and. Mud Lake.
We had that and we did the sign improvements.
Okay. Okay. But he, yeah, so he, he had met with somebody up there and.
They've, they've done.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. All right. Uh, that does actually officially conclude my report.
I, I got one question about something that you said about zoning of SRM and the county stuff. Does the county have anything to do with approving the SRM land, uh, mining?
The Planning Commission, well, no, it doesn't because the Planning Commission doesn't weigh in on BZA cases. They just weigh in on zoning.
I had heard some about the county was approving or disapproving something to do with that.
You, you never went to Larry Weisman about that task in the.
What are we talking about?
The. Uh, mining, um, gravel pit on, on the Hart Farm, Farmington Road.
Okay.
They're trying to buy it, but they got it, an option of buying it if they can get the zoning approved.
Yeah, the conditional use or the extraction of material, gravel materials is a condition in the agricultural district. That's what they're going to be applying for. March 12. That was a big controversy last time that came. Pretty much. Although for some reason, when that happened three, what, three, four years ago, they want, they. They were going to change the zoning, which I, they didn't need to do because they're already agricultural. They just need to get a conditional. There's no reason to change the zoning then to apply for the conditional use. You could just, because extraction of materials in the agricultural district is a condition. But it has to go before the BZA. So to answer your question, the Planning Commission doesn't take a stand on it.
Does not take, the county would not take a stand. All right. That's all for me.
It just real quick, I attended the senior center oversight committee on 11124th. Um, basically thinking about changing the, the rental, uh, renting the senior center. Right now, if someone calls up, they have to make sure an employee is available from the city. So by the time they find that out, usually the people have found somewhere else to have their party. So. They're, they're basically going to try to do it, and this is still in the works, try to like, if you, if you want to rent the depot. You have to go to the city, pay the fee, get the key to it yourself, and then you'll let yourself in and lock it up for your dad. So. I don't know how that's gonna work with the, the senior center. But they did also talk about changing the fees and basically they're thinking about for a nonprofit business. It would be $50 to rent the, the senior center. For a for-profit business, it would be 150. Personal events would be $300 plus $100 deposits. Still working on that. So we'll see how that comes about. Uh, I had the Germantown Council meeting on 2/5. Very few highlights, the estimated cost. The city to resurface Route 4 is 158,000 plus striping, but they actually haven't gone out for bids. They really don't know how much that's going to be. So, but any, any, any increase over that price is gonna have to come out of the city budget. So we'll see what happens. See plans on reducing the speed limit on Route 4 between Worthington and Old Butter from 50 to 30. This is a high, high crash area. So, so that's all I have. So is there any new business? Old, old or new business?
Yeah. Anybody have?
Uh, David.
David, your own 14239 Kefir Road. I got a question for Chief. Um, you mentioned two statistics. One was, um, unoccupied house check. And the other is occupied house check.
Yes.
Can you kind of expand on that a little bit and educate me at least of what, um, what is a check?
It's a vacant house check. Basically, um, the county.
Vacant means there's nobody lives there?
Or they're on vacation.
Okay.
Yeah. So if someone contacts county dispatch or contacts Shauna at the front desk. They're gonna be gone for a week. Um, what happens is, is they fill out a form, basically, basic information about. Your emergency contact, who might be there. And then we will go and walk around the house a few times a day. Um, but that's the, occupied house check is we're driving around, we're stopping and looking or we're paying close attention. Um, while we're driving by and say, we know you live in your house on, on a, uh, Peyton, right? Kefir, Kefir. And we would just write your name down and that would be one of the checks, occupied house checks we did then.
Okay. And they, an occupied house check occurs when?
When we're, just when we're on patrol.
Okay, so you just drive by and that.
Yeah.
I'm there, so it's a house check.
Yeah. And what it does, basically, we make a log as we patrol. And, and what it does is we put a time and say, we checked your house. We put your name next to that. And it basically tells where the officer is in the township throughout the day.
But it's a drive-by check.
Drive-by check. Yeah, okay. Take a house checks, or stop, look, look in the windows, check doors.
Okay. All right. Well, it kind of brings up, um, a concern that I've had for a while. Uh, when I lost my wife, I was alone in the house. And, uh, it occurred to me that if I had some kind of a physical problem and was able to call emergency services. But could not get to the door, couldn't physically get to the door to let them in. They don't tear that door down.
Yeah, there's, if you talk to Chief Aldrin at the fire department, they have a device. They give you all the information on how to get this device.
They have it?
They, they give you the information on how to.
About how, about a Knox box is one of, one of the devices, but it's the one they use. FYI, uh, that's it. That was my solution to keeping my door from getting tore down.
Sure.
In that scenario that I gave you. Now, can you address, uh, I don't want the actual number or names. What I want is there are a lot of people. Who are living by themselves, uh, alone at home. And either do or don't have a monitoring service like ADT.
Are there a lot of people? I would.
Uh, well, you know.
Um, I wouldn't say.
15, 20.
I wouldn't say a lot. I, I, most of the calls, like you're talking about, we go. If they are, um, alarm type calls. So most of the houses do have alarms. Um, so I wouldn't say a lot. And in the cases where somebody is in the house, we try to do the least amount of damage as possible. So. Say you got a back door that's got small windows, we'll break one of the panes of glass and then reach in and unlock. We try not to break doors down if at all possible.
Yeah. Well, there's a school of thought that you don't have a handle on the inside to break your deadbolt for that very reason. If your door has a window.
Yeah.
Which precludes your solution of minimizing the damage. Um, I, I spoke to the chief, uh, a couple of occasions and he introduced the idea. Uh, of the fire EMS department eating. Several, I didn't specify a number, several Knox boxes. They come in a style that you can put over your door. And you have to have the door open to get it off. But a Knox box, they have a key to. You put your house key in it, much like any commercial building we have would do. I have that on my back door. The EMS department, our EMS department get a map if they get a call to my home. It says I have one, where it's located. And it's pretty obvious. I mean, you walk up the door, you see it. But it would keep my door from getting tore down or pride open or whatever else is necessary. But it would keep my door from getting tore down or pride open or whatever else is necessary, thus costing me a pair bill. So I thought it was a real good idea, he was going to check with the fire department and see if they thought it was a good idea, I guess, but he never has got back to me. So here's my, here's my little thing. Uh I wrote up a document to um introduce that as a project. I'm wondering if you folks would be interested in that idea and or supporting it. Now, these devices, um they're over the, over the door kind, just go on your door. And uh they have them for uh security screen doors too, you know, heavy metal screen doors at, at bars and all that. But in any case, uh I'm thinking if we had those available to people, we could lend them to them, but generally speaking, I'm not going to live that long. It's going to be a return sometime and um, you know, we're no longer needs to be used. So that's, that's the idea I have, is to make those available to folks who live alone, who may or may not have a mon- a monitoring service. Because if they have some kind of a physical problem and push that button, I don't know how monitoring services work, but at their worst, they call a responsible individual to go help somebody who may be really in need of emergency services. So fire EMS ought to be on their way instead of calling the named individual. You get what I'm doing, where I'm going here, because there's a name, they give, these people give a name of somebody who can check on them.
Right, emergency contact or something.
Yeah, basically. If they push that button, there should be EMS on the way. Not, not calling some code guy who happens to have a key to their house, who can walk in anytime and or be accused of something once they do walk in.
That's typically the way it's set up, most, most, they contact the person and they contact local.
They push that button, EMS ought to be on the way.
Yes, that's typically the way it works, yes, that is typically, I've never, I've never been in a situation where we weren't called when one of those buttons were.
I have.
Have you?
Yeah. The button was just pushed. So what, oh, but anyway, I got through that one. But um if these devices were available, a person who's in that situation could put one on their door and the chief, borrow it from the chief, record it and all that stuff, they just wouldn't pay for it unless they pay a deposit.
Do you have the, I'm trying to look it up right now, but there's not showing a cost, I'm on the Knox, Knox box website, it made me select.
A hundred and some bucks.
Okay, because it made me select Germantown Fire Department and then it, it would show me what's available in our area.
About six months ago, I had a resident ask me about the same thing. And I got with Chief Aldrin and he gave me the paperwork for this box, this lockbox.
Yeah, and you got to explain what I just tried to go through, and I'm not very good at it. But if that person would, would take advantage and borrowing one, it could keep their door from getting tore down.
Let me talk to Chief Aldrin about that, maybe it's something that we can work on together with.
I would hope you would.
Yeah.
You know, that, in any case, I want to bring you to.
Have a list of the residents in the township that's got it on your security, push the button.
We have um house checks that are extended house checks that we do. Um so yeah, we've got a small list of people that have put in.
Man, are they ten or ten of them?
One, not even ten, I don't think, even ten, yeah.
So it would be many, ten would probably be God's plenty to loan out to people. But if people knew, you know, I bought one and had it installed because there's none to borrow, you know.
That's a great idea.
There by myself.
Yeah.
There's no guarantee I could get to the door to unlock it.
Think they're over a hundred and fifty bucks a piece, I don't think.
Paid a hundred and ten, something like that.
Yeah, I, if I remember right, they're about a hundred and fifty dollars a piece, and I think it'd be worth.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah, for the, to the.
And there's two types would, that would be, make sense, is if you're going to loan it, not to give them one that you have to screw to the wall, which mine is. Give them one that goes over the door. The door has to be open to get it off.
Sure.
And uh we give the, the chief and EMS access to the house.
I think that's a great idea. I like the idea.
And as, as as people that care about our neighbors.
Yeah.
I'd be more than happy to buy one myself. Give it to the chief to use, you know, it's his key, I mean, he gets a form when you, when you buy one. When you want to buy one, he gets a form, he puts his number, his code number, whatever. And then they key that thing to his key.
Okay.
And then inside you put your house key.
It's showing there's a dealer in Richmond, Indiana is the closest.
The chief's, Chief Aldrin is already, he already.
He gave me the information and the contact and everything.
So maybe, maybe I'll talk to chief and.
If you give a chance and.
Yeah, absolutely.
I already brought up the idea to him and I gave him a document and introduced, to introduce the project and why and all that.
Yeah.
You know.
I think it's a great idea, I think we should.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see him have something to lend to people.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree. We could perform that, provide that service for our people who live alone. And most of them are probably elder.
I'll see if he can, you know, we might be able to get Germantown Police Department to go in on it, so we've got Germantown, our department who serves everybody.
You're involved on every call, I would imagine.
Yeah, we were.
Yeah, I don't think you carry keys to them, but that thing, fire EMS people personnel, either do all the time or get one when there's a box involved. Right, I don't know how all that works.
It should be able to, you need a key in case you're there first.
If we're there first, I always call dispatch and have them ask if, does any keys go to the fire department? Because they have some keys. And these are the same key for each one of, you're talking about, I always call and ask if they have access to the house or they have a code for a door or something like that, because they do have codes for doors before I kick the door in to get to somebody, that's the last thing I want to do.
I know, but if you had the key with you.
Yeah.
You had the same key.
Yeah, I didn't, because.
The township gets there first.
Yeah, and if they, if we get ten of them, we could probably get.
All the same key.
Yeah. Keep it on a beat back.
Well, they, they would have to be key the same. Uh and other districts, other organizations other than Germantown EMS serve a different district and the chief can expound on who goes where, who gets called for where. But I live on Kefir Road and Farmerville can get to me faster than Germantown can get to me. But Germantown was dispatched when Beretta passed. And uh so I was, I thought it was Farmerville's on a time, but. I finally figured out that they have different code keys, different codes, so they have a different key, different jurisdictions, I guess you call it. Whatever, who gets called for where, you know? How all that works, but anyway.
Well, I'll talk to Chief Aldrin about it.
Well, I think it's a good idea, I, I'm, it had to have these people support.
Yeah.
You know.
I feel.
And I can provide the, the document I gave the chief as an introduction.
I like your idea, I think it gives a peace of mind to people.
If, if they could just borrow one for as long as they needed, um you know, I, I loan is not a good thing.
Yeah.
When you're our age, because anything can happen to you. And uh I don't want my door tore down. It's all truly saving, they're still going to come to me.
Right.
They're going to get in if there's a call.
You know, cool, you can talk about. Thank you. Uh anything else? Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We are adjourned at eight sixty-nine.